Well Larry, are you ready to go? It's five thirty. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, Detroit Lakes Planning Commission. Uh, and so we'll go ahead, uh, with the, uh, with approval of the minutes. Um, do I hear a motion on that? Uh, move to, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second on the minutes discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so they're passed. So, before we get into the rest of the meeting, just a couple of, uh, items I need to clarify here. This is, uh, this body makes recommendations to the Community Development Committee, which will meet on Monday at, uh, let's see, five o'clock, uh, which then makes recommendations to the City Council. But, uh, both the Community Development Commission and the City Council pay a lot of attention to what the Planning Commission says. But, uh, you don't agree with what we decide here tonight, you do have a couple of other options to have your voice heard. Second, the way we run the, um, uh, format of the meeting is first we hear from staff on an issue, uh, then, uh, ask questions of, and that would be Larry, and then we ask questions of Larry. Uh, members of the public can then comment, motion, discussion, and then vote. So, with that, and then I ask you if you are gonna comment on an issue, come to the podium, state your name and address. For the record, we do record this meeting, uh, as required under state law. So, we need to know who's speaking. So, with that, Larry, would you take us to the first item tonight?
Yeah, the first item on our agenda is the, um, Long Pine Estates Third Edition Preliminary Platte. I was doing a nice job of scrolling to it, and then I jumped. Here we go. This is the platte of Long Pine Estates Third Edition. As you can see, there've been several plats in, ahead of this. So, this is the platte that shows the north proposed public road, and then there's a south road as well. So, the north road goes up through all of the pine trees, and the south road basically connects Longview Lane and Village Lane. So, uh, this, in the staff report that you have in front of you, I am recommending approval of the preliminary platte. This is, um, very much in accordance with what has been proposed all along for this platte. And I'm looking for my recommendations. Uh, we, I recommend approval, subject to the following conditions. First, that the owner pay the required park dedication fee. I put thirty-four thousand five hundred in there. We have to go back and renegotiate that and talk about that. State law is very specific about what we can charge for park dedication fees, and it's based on the pre-platted value of the property. So, we probably can't charge him thirty-four thousand five hundred additional dollars for this platte. But, uh, we should have it say that it pay, that he pay the required park dedication fee. It may be that we owe him money back from what he's already paid. Number two, that the owner provide any utility or stormwater easements. And finally, that the owner apply for a land disturbance permit. So, those would be the conditions that I recommend. I did get some, uh, correspondence on this that I would like to present. I have a letter here from a Kim Delmain Roth, and Ann Delmain Johnson, and Aleah Delmain Langley. Uh, they retain ownership of their parents' home at nine thirty-six Longview Lane. And they state that they dread the idea of a street punched all the way through from Village Lane to Longview Lane and the increased traffic it will bring. Frankly, we don't see any reason to do so. The street could end in a cul-de-sac, leaving the beautiful area of pines in a quiet neighborhood, not just for those of us on the south end of Longview Lane, but for those who will be living in Block Four. Kim remembers some of the earlier proposals for the area east of Long Lake and south of Long Pine Estates included a park or playground. We have yet to see this included in the actual development. Perhaps this area where you are proposing to tear out trees and putting in a road could be turned into a park for all to enjoy. We are sorry, we are not able to attend the meeting on March third. We hope you will seriously consider changing the proposed road, uh, for, south of Block Four to end in a cul-de-sac. Uh, I've talked with our city engineer regarding this particular road alignment, and we both feel very strongly that this is really the way the road needs to be, uh, put in in this area to provide for adequate snow plowing and public safety, and to eliminate, uh, too many dead ends.
Any other letters, Larry?
Um, there's been some correspondence between Ann Anderson and Kelsey Clem, but I see she's here tonight, so we'll let her speak to that on her own.
Okay. So, before we get to that, um, questions for Larry? Yeah, Liz?
May I ask, at this point?
Yes.
So Larry, I have a question on the comment that was made on the cul-de-sac. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep.
But it's in our ordinance that we would mitigate the use of cul-de-sac, and if we can continue a road through, that we would not continue a permanent cul-de-sac. We would classify it as temporary. Is that correct?
We don't have a hard and fast rule on that, but we typically, uh, unless there's a reason for it, do not like to see an inordinate amount of cul-de-sacs in the area, because they do create quite a problem for snow plowing, and they create dead ends that are also a problem for emergency vehicles. Uh, but there are some cases where they do work well and can be useful, just because of the type of layout that you have, but this is not one of those cases.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions for Larry? Okay, well, at this point, um, members of the, uh, you guys in the audience, if you wanna come up and talk about this, um, did you wanna talk about the platte itself first, or? Yeah, come on, come on up.
Adam Geiger with Meadowline Surveying on behalf of Raymond Redding. Um, I think Larry did a good job of explaining it. This was kinda five years ago, I think, we brought, it started, and it was done in phases. So, this is kinda the final, the final phase of this project. Um, and, uh, yeah, if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Okay, any questions for Adam right away? Okay, no. Okay, other members of the audience care to come up? Ann, did you wanna speak to this? We'll get somebody started.
Thank you. I'm Ann Anderson, and my husband Jeff Johnson and I own, uh, eight fifty. We live at eight fifty Longview Drive, the original Longview Drive that goes to the park. Um, we also have the property across the road, eight forty-nine, where we have a garage. And then there is, uh, some talk with, among eight of us, folks that own a buffer between the old gravel pit, which is now city, and then our back lots from across the road. And that's a hundred feet that, back in spring of eighty-two, um, my dad, who we purchased the house from twenty-five years ago, and his group got that so that the gravel pit could not encroach on the land. And that was a cool deal. It's in the names of, uh, as a collective. There are eight of us and nine remaining portions. The city had developed the two elevens portions at the entrance of the park to do the airport expansion. So, we're down to our eight folks, private residents owning nine parcels. Okay, um, yep, we're, we've been in and listening, and of course, you know, we hate to lose our natural habitat and all those sorts of things. But what I'm here focusing is, let's just look for our purposes, uh, speaking with some of our crew in that collective ownership. Can I just call it the six hundred? That is the north development area of the Brainer Beach. There's a two, there's the four nine zero zero five three six hundred. And then there's the southern portion of that east-west Longview Drive. That, that's not what I'm speaking to. I'm speaking to the northern post. And the city owns then north of that. Okay, so then, uh, in my picture, and thank you, this is really cool when it's in color, there's that blue outline of what is proposed to be that twenty-foot sidewalk bike trail that will surround the area eventually, or that's the proposal. And so, if you are looking at that, I'm not sure, but there's the concern for us is the north and northwest and west of that. And what it is, really, are just, um, I think, good sense, safety concerns. We, uh, we know that Raymond Redding has, I think, what was our last time we went at this, Larry? Twenty sixteen?
It's been a while.
Yeah, but you know, it's, it's what it, what it is. And so, what we're wondering is, um, are, is there a proposed approximate timeline for like, the next two rows of housing and the public road construction, and then the sidewalk trail? That, we really would like to know. Um, are we looking ahead to twenty fifty? You know, twenty, twenty-three? It would be nice to know what's each phase going to be within the development. Then, uh, we would like-
Can I answer that first, before I forget what your questions are?
Well, I wouldn't let you forget.
Okay. Uh, the road construction is scheduled for two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, this summer.
So, that will start right away.
So, that would be first before the housing, the new housing?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the trail construction, that is something that is up in the air. We have no idea when, if ever, that would occur, so.
We'd like the sound of that.
Having said that, it, it, I don't know. I just don't have a good answer for that.
Well, we're just putting it out there now, because what we think is that with our, um, the northwest and west sides of that proposed property, they, that, uh, uh, butts our properties. Um, and it's a little bit scary. You know, I remember being a kid, and boy, when there's places to explore and cliffs to jump, from, um, we're all in. And we're thinking, now how does this develop? And will it, will it, uh, I don't, lack of a word, encroach on our properties? Uh, what, what safety considerations are we looking ahead? You know, God help us if we have to build a huge fence. No one wants that. We have still some natural critters wandering about, and, you know, we, we'd hate, hate to lose that. However, you know, we're just worried in the development, what would happen? Uh, and, and so, if it's up in the air, that's a good sign for now. And I suppose we'd be back as more things go on. We just gotta stay up with our communications here, which I really do appreciate. Um, then, thinking about that, moving into the next, uh, B part of that, you know, we're gonna have our curious trespassers, and, um, you know, can there be, you know, with Raymond and the city, and those of us who have properties that it may be affected, uh, collaborate at that point? You know, what are our, our safety concerns? And, you know, I don't wanna be in my last years of life, that grandma with the cane going, "You kids, get out of my land!" You know, that's not what I really wanna do as I phase out of this life. However, you know, I promised Dad I would.
So, are you thinking, are you having safety concerns about the possible bike trail? Or that goes through there, or the platte?
Yeah, just the whole, you know, how the, uh, most northern housing is right against the city property, which used to be the, you know, old gravel pit? And I think if we have too mu- we have the row housing that went in, and that was along the road, Longview Drive that goes east-west. And then now we're gonna have two more rows of housing closer to the airport, and I'm, I'm guessing that everybody, the FAA is okay. I mean, everybody's already looked at that. That's not an issue. But I'm still looking. I can get down in there. The, the land that is, you know, um, off limits, because our property that's across the road is right against the old gravel pit. And swallows, you know, live in the banks and such and so on. And, you know, a strand of barbed wire, which is held for, well, since early eighties, goes all the way north to Schwartz, uh, through Schwartz's property. And, you know, I, I just worry, uh, I always wanted to be a paratrooper. We went to Snappy Field and jumped off the gravel pit there. So, does the city plan on leveling? Does the city plan on filling? These are questions we have.
Okay. So, are you worried about the kids in the, in, the kids that'll be in the new development, or?
Well, not, you know, kids are kids.
Yeah, okay.
And, um, but I just think, we have to think ahead, because there are the opportunists too, you know, that can get around back in there. And if they see the backs of our garages and sheds and some storage things, they'll be curious, and who knows?
Okay.
Though, so those are, those are really our concerns for that. Um, and that's all that I said I, you know, would address tonight as far as from our crew that goes north on Longview Drive.
Okay, all right.
I'm trying to understand, Ann, if you're, if you're in favor of the back path, or if you're not?
I'm not in favor of any development.
Okay.
But it's moot, you know? That's why we love our one-hundred-foot prairie, natural prairie swatch, you know? Jeff just retired, you know, we're gonna work out some good natural plantings for pollinator garden, and you just wonder. 'Cause I would just love to go off the beaten track if I were a kid or an adult. I mean, who wouldn't wanna explore? 'Cause we, 'cause we used to always explore what's already there, you know? Even as adults, take walks with grandkids and such. So, that's where we are. We just would want to be in the loop, and-
Okay.
Oh, also, for those who are going south of us, we're the property number one, uh, across the road, but those like Underdell, then Mercer, then Metasite, this is going on the Longview Drive that goes north-south, and so they're south of us. And that's an open area, and that sidewalk really goes behind their homes. And I know that they are concerned. We've had the mailbox talks. And that was one thing they asked me to add today. So, I almost forgot that, so I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna address this, uh, platte? Okay, with that, any further questions? Um, otherwise I'd entertain a motion for approval or denial.
I move to approve the preliminary platte as stated by the city with the change of thirty-four thousand five hundred to required, as Larry recommended.
Yeah, thank you. And a second?
I will second that.
Okay, second from Kyle, so thank you. Okay, with that, further discussion on this? So, Larry, the, this platte doesn't show that bike sidewalk trail at all. We, if that's just a-
It does.
It does?
Yeah.
Oh, I see it there now, okay. All right.
Yeah, it's kinda annotated right by the outlet, Stormwater Retention Area, twenty-foot wide walkway and bike trail.
Got you, and then it runs-
And then it runs up along the north side, okay.
So, it's platted, but yeah, the, the, the plan to actually pave it would be, we don't have a plan to pave it at this point, 'cause we usually try to connect that with some other project.
You have neither the plan nor the money to do that.
Right, yeah, so. Neither the plan nor the money to do anything with it right now. Yep, so, but the, the, it's set aside there if we need it, so. Okay, any, uh, further discussion or questions? Okay, well, I'm gonna call the question in. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes, so this'll go forward to the Community Development Committee again on, uh, on Monday at five o'clock, recommending, uh, recommendation for approval. So, thank you. With that, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Long Bridge, or, uh, variance for additional parking spaces on, and, uh, slips, uh, at, uh, well, Long Bridge, basically. And Liz, you were gonna-
Recuse.
Recuse from this one, since you have a financial interest in that property, so.
Thank you.
I would think, Larry, that we could ask Liz questions though, right? If, but she can't actually participate in this.
She can't participate, but you can ask her questions, certainly.
Yes, all right, thank you. I don't know if there'll be any, but, you know, Larry, could you introduce us to what's going on here?
Yes, a request has been made by Hanson Properties of Long Bridge to not require construction of four additional parking spaces in order to allow expansion of a marina from thirty-six slips to fifty slips. The additional fourteen slips requires four additional parking spaces on the site. So, what I want you to understand is that we are not involved at all in the approval of the number of slips the marina has. That is the, that is the role of the DNR. So, our only business here tonight is to talk about the variance from the parking requirements that go along with them having these additional slips. Now, depending on which way you look at this, they're increasing the number of slips from thirty-six to fourteen, because their current license is just for the thirty-six slips.
Thirty-six to fifty.
Fifty.
By fourteen, yeah.
Not fourteen.
You said thirty-six to fourteen, Larry, and it's okay, but-
Thirty-six to fifty, they're adding an additional, I've been up a long time, so anyways.
Yes, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, they're adding an additional fourteen slips to go up to fifty. But if you look at it from their perspective, they have been operating with sixty slips, and so they are actually reducing the number of slips that they have at that site. So, but anyway, um, so basically, uh, the current facility that we have there now with the restaurant and the cabins and the parking was approved by a variance in May of two thousand seventeen. They're allowed to have thirty-six percent impervious surface coverage, a thirty-foot building height, and a forty-one foot setback from the ordinary high water mark. And they were required to provide seventy parking spaces, which is what they have done for the restaurant. That also includes some very significant stormwater retention on that site. And so, our concern is, you know, obviously, we're concerned about what the marina could, what kind of damage a marina might cause to aquatic vegetation near shore. And, uh, we're also concerned about any hazards to navigation that might come from increased boat traffic. But we should give consideration to the following findings of fact. First, the variance is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance, as the ordinance is in place to make sure there is sufficient parking for this type of business. The parking has currently been in place since two thousand seventeen. It's certainly more parking than has ever been available on that site, and it's worked very well. Uh, the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan, as this is a commercial use in a commercial district. Three, the proposal puts the property to use in a reasonable manner, as there is, as the current use has more than a thirty-six slip marina and has been there for a number of years. Four, the circumstances are unique to the property. The owner has requested the enlargement of the marina from the licensed thirty-six slips to fifty slips, which is a reduction from the sixty-one slips that are actually currently in use. The property exceeds the thirty-five percent impervious surface coverage, and adding more parking spaces is not desirable. And five, the variance would maintain the essential character of the neighborhood, as it will not alter the current use of the property. So, approval of the variance is recommended, as the owner will continue to use the property in the same manner that it has since nineteen, since two thousand seventeen.
How does this affect impervious surface again, Larry? I mean-
Well, whatever they would have to do to increase the, to four parking spaces would be the additional increase in impervious surface.
Right, okay.
I haven't done the math on what that would be, but it's probably a percent or two.
So, what we're trying to do here is to basically get the number of parking spaces down to what's actually already there.
Yeah, we would leave it the way it is.
Leave it the way it is, and, and, and to reduce the number of marina slips. We, well, we don't have any control over the marina slips, but that would, is part of the whole, with the package.
If we do this, the DNR may still either approve or deny their request for the slips.
Okay.
That's their call.
Yep, so that's, that's still proceeding then?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Um, yeah, Don?
Does the, does each of the cabins have their own?
Each of the cabins are required to have their own parking spaces, yes.
And it's just one parking space for each cabin?
One and a half, it's-
One and a half.
One and a half. That's kinda hard.
Half a car, you know?
Half a car.
I always think of the ECOGOS as about a half a car. Anyway, any, besides the boy, sorry.
Page twenty-two of the packet, that illustration that you're looking at, how recent is this illustration? 'Cause it indicates like gravel parking, yet I know it's paved.
Which one are you looking at?
Page twenty-two.
Page twenty-two of the packet.
Look at page sixteen. That's an aerial photo that shows the paved parking. This was obviously after two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, even the-
Well, that was my question, how old is this?
Even the dark is, is on.
That would be a question for Sam Ruffer to answer.
Sure.
Well, thank you. Um, I'm Sam Ruffer, I'm, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. So, um, this one's a weird one, for sure. So, my page's numbers are, are maybe a little off, but I have page fifteen and forty-three, which is the, like, the GIS photo. Is that what you're looking at, Marcus?
No, it's this-
Oh, you're looking at.
Looking at.
Oh, like the survey?
Yeah, I was just curious how old that was, because-
My guess is that this survey was provided as part of their variance application back in, what was it, Larry? Twenty seventeen?
Two thousand seventeen, yeah.
So, this was probably a survey drawing done before the parking lot is in place? If that makes sense? 'Cause I think this doesn't have the new expanded building on it. Yeah, 'cause it does show gravel as parking, so I think the survey drawing is pre the construction that was done in twenty nineteen-ish.
Yeah, I, so, well, if you see on this one, there's a, an existing cabin proposed to be converted to Pizza Shack. So, is there parking in front of that? Or, 'cause it doesn't, I don't believe there is, from my recollection.
Well, I think if you look at the actual GIS photo, so, the page, I have it as page fifteen, but that, that shows what it looks like today. And I don't think there's parking necessarily in front of that. Looks like there is off to the right a little bit, maybe?
I was just wondering, 'cause I don't know of any Pizza Shack. I would be very-
No, they didn't.
There is a Pizza Shack there.
There is?
Yep.
Yes.
Since when have they been serving?
They're not serving pizza out of there?
It's a second kitchen.
Oh, it's the cook shop?
It's a second kitchen.
Oh, it's the cook, okay.
Yep.
Second kitchen. So, if I'm missing out on pizza, I would, I would know.
I could order you one.
I'm just kinda hungry right now, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Any, any more questions for Sam or Larry at this point?
Yeah, I've got a question. So, the seventy spaces, Larry, that were allowed for the restaurant in twenty, that was twenty nineteen?
Seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen. Was that with, that went along with the redesign and increased space in the, um, restaurant itself?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, so the requirement for parking is based on seating, is that correct?
Based on square footage.
It's based on square footage?
Yeah.
Not square footage indoors, or square footage of the entire property?
Square footage indoors.
Okay.
But that's typical of all of the restaurants that we do around the lake, or anywhere else.
Okay. Because there's an awful lot of seating outdoors as well at this restaurant? With, you know, how do we, how do we accommodate that? The entire lawn in front of the Pizza Shack is, got picnic tables and more seating for more restaurant, which, um, I'd be curious as to knowing, what is the total, um, butts and seats that you could have as far as-
I would have to go back and look at what analysis we did back in two thousand seventeen. But it was felt at that time that that was adequate to serve the needs of this business.
Okay. 'Cause presently, there is a parking on the street that happens quite regularly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well-
Not any different than downtown or anywhere else where you have businesses located.
Right. And then there's also another parking lot that's not involved in this discussion?
That is a public parking.
That is a public parking lot, correct?
Which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the one that is to the west.
Okay, 'cause there's also one south in there a little ways.
On the other side of the bridge as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not very much, it's mostly people that are fishing, but-
Right.
I, so that's public over there. I thought that was, I was gonna ask if, I thought that was maybe home.
Well, I think a lot of the restaurant parking goes in the public parking spot. We all know that. And so, that public parking, is that for access to the bridge for fishermen? I mean, the city maintains that for-
It is public parking, and we maintain it for any members of the public who wish to use it, just like the public parking lots that are downtown or on the north side of town.
Okay.
For any type of public use.
Okay.
Kids get burnt there and jump off the bridge.
Yeah, that's illegal, you're not jumping off the bridge, that doesn't happen, does it?
So parking there, you got the restaurant and you got fifty slips there, so you got how many people park there? Plus the restaurant on top of that.
That's what I, so like, like the.
Right, right.
I'm trying to do the math on it, is what I'm trying to do.
I, I, I don't think you can do the math on it.
But I think, I think what we need to look at is how it's been operating now and whether or not. Allowing a variance for four slips is more in our best interest or requiring them to have the four slips and increasing the amount of impervious surface. That's, that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I.
And you mean parking spaces, not slips?
Right.
That's okay. Yeah, I knew that.
You know, I mean, it's like anything else, not all the, all the pontoons are in use out there either, so you would not ever see.
Well, and that was my other, that was my other question, the four to one, uh, parking one spot for four slips?
Yes.
And was, was that a formula at the time that we did that parking ordinance?
No, that's new, we haven't, we didn't used to have any parking requirement for marinas.
Okay.
When did that come in, Larry?
Two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so, so the parking lot was approved before we had an ordinance on. Or before we had a requirement on.
Correct, but even if we would have had a requirement for parking though, that would have been an existing non-conforming use.
Yep.
Wouldn't have factored in either way.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and, and this is, I'm just thinking out loud, but it, it, it's curious to me that, you know, one parking spot for four slips. When you have, say you have four slips and they each have a pontoon that will hold fifteen people. How, how, uh, let's see, that'd be, you know, that's.
I think the reasoning is that everybody isn't there getting their pontoon out all at the same time.
Right, right.
In fact, I wonder if some of them move at all, but that's.
Right. So with the fifty, with that ordinance that way, the fifty slips, there should be twelve parking spots.
Correct.
At the four to one, and so you approved seventy for the restaurant.
Right.
So why, and there are, and how many parking spots do they have there?
They have seventy, plus the, plus the ones for the cabins.
So how is it that they don't need to have, uh?
Well, at the.
Eighty-two.
Until, until two thousand nineteen, we did not have any requirement for parking for marinas.
Okay.
And even if we had had one before then, the marina has been there for. Well, not forever, but for a long time.
Fifteen years.
For a very long time.
Okay. I go by that every single day when I go to work or go to town, and my biggest concern is safety. It's a very bad intersection.
Sure.
Um, if you look at it, I mean, I come down Sherwood Drive, which would be on the. That's the north side of where the Blue Square is, there is a stop sign at the bottom of that hill. But there's a curve going around to the right along Long Bridge Road, and then, then there's a curve back across the bridge. And the, the site, the visibility is, is poor. Um, and, um, I don't believe there's any crosswalk there, I think that would be an important thing to think about having. Because you do have a public parking lot that's across there, and people walk across the street there all the time. Um, and or some other kind of traffic mitigation. Because the people come along Long Bridge Road, I just know there's a few people that live there, and they come pretty quickly, and then they're at the curb. And then right there is the entrance to the parking lot, and right there is the restaurant, and then there's the bridge and.
Lot of people are on the bridge.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see, I get the parking spaces. But there's an awful lot of cars, and I, I think that we also need to consider some safety involved here.
If you added more parking spaces, wouldn't you add more traffic problems, cause there'd be more people coming in?
You're gonna have as many people that wanna go there as, I don't think the parking spaces are gonna have anything to do with how many people are gonna be there.
That's my point.
So I'm gonna ask us to hold off on this part of the discussion until after emotional. We really wanna be asking questions of Larry, hear from the public, and then have the rest of the discussion.
I'm not done.
Can you hold on this until?
Oh, it's about the parking.
Well, I underst- but the whole thing is about the parking, so I'd like to go, get back to our, I'd kinda let things go, cause Sam needed to answer a question, but we need to hear from people, that's all. So if you could keep that in your mind, Nancy, that'd be great. So Larry, have you got anything else to add at this point?
I have nothing else to add, I was hoping to hear from the public as well.
So Sam, could you fini-, you'll be our first, uh, uh, public comment here, so let's, yeah.
Um, yeah, well, well, thank you, and I, and I, I, I think all the comments are valuable, I think what is important to realize here is that. What's being proposed here reduces the use and will reduce the amount of cars that are there, because what sits there today is sixty slips. Um, and the proposal here is to go down to fifty. Now, the, the reason it says thirty-six in there is, there's kind of a perfect storm of factors. And when this marina was put into place, I think in about the year two thousand, so twenty-two years ago. And it exists as it exists today. There has not been a change in the length, there's not been a change in the number of slips, there were sixty slips put in in two thousand. Now unbeknownst to the current owners, when it was put in two thousand, the permit was only for thirty-six, but the owner at that time, for whatever reason, put in. Almost twice the amount of slips. Um. As far as I can tell, nobody knew that or was aware of that for twenty-two years, or twenty-one years, cause this kinda started last year. The old decking was unsafe, it was old treated pressurized lumber. And, uh, so the, the entire marina was replaced, rebuilt as it exactly sat before. But with more modern environmentally friendly materials, and this is done with the, uh, consent of the DNR and saying, yep, that's what we wanna see. Uh, it's better for the vegetation, it's better for the fish, it's better for the lake, all that sort of stuff, so they put it back in place. Somehow in that process, it was discovered, but, but wait a minute, what you're rebuilding isn't what the permit is for, and so that kinda is what led us here today, so. There's sixty slips there today, there's been sixty slips there since about the year two thousand, so the amount of traffic, the amount of parking, the amount of people. That's all based on sixty slips. So the proposal here is to reduce that to the, to fifty slips. Um, which would, uh, which would reduce the, the use on it. Um, and you asked a good question about why isn't eighty-two slips, or eighty-two parking spaces required, and that's, well, thirty-six of them were already permitted. So they'd be in existing non-conforming use, so the, their request to the DNR is fourteen more slips. Even though it's actually ten less that are in use, but fourteen more that are permitted for. Um, and, and there's a number of reasons for doing that, but it's mitigation and that sort of stuff, so the, the DNR has, has assigned off on this and approved it and said, yep. That, that's fantastic, it'll be better for the lake. Um, the sheriff has signed off on it and approved it in terms of hazards and board navigation and safety, all beneficial. Um, I think this needs to be weighed with the, the pressure and demand for marina slips on the lake. Um, and, you know, to be honest, if, uh, if the number of slips isn't reduced, it isn't necessarily the owner of the property that suffers here. It's the community here that relies on having boat slips to be able to access and use the lake. Um, so I think what is being proposed here is, is better than what exists today, so the concerns that are there about traffic and people and use and all that sort of stuff, yeah, I agree with that. Those, those are all issues and those are all problems, uh, but what's being proposed will be better than what is there today. Um, it's a unique circumstance, I can't really pin any fault or blame on anyone. Uh, it's also a unique circumstance in that the owners were basically here before this commission four years ago. Making sure that their plan, sorry, I'm supposed to be at a choir concert, so I get alerts, but I'm not gonna miss sixth grade choir. Um, so the, the current owners were here four years ago, um, to kind of get this in place and approve it. No one knowing, the, the commission, the city, the owners, that what is there for the marina didn't exactly exist, now they kinda have to go back and try to reconfigure what they're doing. Um, and there's two options, basically, it's to request a variance on the impervious surface. To allow for four more parking spaces and, and more impervious surface, or to request a variance to request less parking spaces. Um, and it's kind of the lesser of two evils, more impervious surface obviously isn't good. Um, for fewer parking spaces with less parking demand, I think is the better choice of the two. But, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, any of them I have, uh, I kind of put a summary together that's in your material as well, that sort of explains the situation and how we got here. Um, and I thank you all for your consideration.
Okay, thanks, Sam, so, let's hear, other members of the audience wanna come up and speak at this time? Come on up.
I'm Tim Burgin, excuse me, I live a block away from this. I have the, I guess it's the city's parking lot on the side of the street on the curb that Nancy, you were talking about. Let me tell you, gentlemen, that parking lot is full from sunrise till well after sunset. And the parking lot on the south side of the bridge is full pretty much all day long too. You have fishermen there, you have people bring their kids to jump off the bridge. There's twenty, twenty, twenty-five kids jumping off that bridge all the time. And with the new, uh, dockage that they put in. I've lived there a few years and it's getting tougher and tougher every year to drive your boat through there. Because it has gotten, water area's gotten smaller because that marina has gotten bigger. And so. We got two bad storms there, you've got too many boats and too many cars. And I think you gotta really, really take a look at this, you really do. Because something down the road is gonna happen there, and it's gonna be a big crash, I think. It, it, I, I, I guess I could sympathize with the, uh, handsomen's and their needs too. But it's gotta go both ways. I, I, I think.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Yes.
Oh, what's your address, Tim?
Nineteen seventy Long Bridge Road.
Thank you. Anyone else gonna comment on this issue? Okay, with that, um, let's call the, let's have a motion on this and then we'll continue that discussion, okay?
Well, I, I still had another comment about the, the question about the parking.
After the, I, okay, sure, I don't wanna lose it, so, we would certainly have discuss, but go ahead, yes, that's fine.
So this isn't the first time I've talked about parking, and that we have had a parking ordinance that we've made. And, I mean, I'm gonna just refer to the McDonald's discussion, and that we make a ordinance, and then we, you know, go and try to change it. And I'm, I'm a big proponent of if we have the ordinance, and that's how many parking spots we're supposed to have, that we should. I get real concerned about somebody else then going, well, they did that, now we get to do this, you know? And so, um, this is a very unique situation, and it's a small area, four spots are not, not a big spot. But I am, I'm, I get very concerned when we don't stick with what ordinance that we have set out. Um, and, um, I, I like the lake as well as anyone, Mr. Ruffer. But, um, I don't think we're denying anybody access to the lake, we have a number of public accesses, and if they have their boat, they can put their boat in. And take it out every day they want to, so having a lot more marinas, I don't think, I'm not in favor of that, to begin with. But in this particular situation, um, I just think that we need to look at what our ordinances are and stay with it as much as we can. No, I don't like to have more impervious surface as well, but, um. I just think that it's, 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 there's an awful lot of storms going on here that, um. But we're now in twenty twenty-two, things were decided before, and, um. That's another thing, Larry, that we've done, when somebody does something different to change it, then we've tried to get them to where the, you know, the ordinance is, um. Compli-, you know, compliant with what the new ordinance is, so, that's just the comment that I had.
Okay, and if there's more, if something else occurs to you, we'll let you go again, so, but thanks for waiting on that, so, okay, thank you. Anyone else have comments at this time, since we're doing that, planning commission? Actually, the members of the audience, if anything else to say, you could jump in there now too, but, um.
I just, like, I think there's a comment made that the marina's gotten bigger over time, it hasn't, you know, this has been that way for twenty-two years, it's actually smaller. And I agree that parking's a concern, um, and we're reducing that, and so the option is to have more parking or this proposal, which is less parking.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, so I think it's, it is time for a motion on this one.
I make a motion to approve the.
Marcus makes a motion to approve the variance as requested.
Yes.
Correct, all right, thank you, further, other, I need a second at this point. Not.
I'll second that.
Sean will second it, thank you, so we can have that discussion, so, um, further discussion on this.
You know, Nancy, uh, has, you know, you ma- you made me think about this a lot, um, and I agree with both sides of this argument. There's the question of what's the lesser of two evils, as you stated, is it more impervious surface or less parking? Um, and without question, uh, i- i- the, the safety concern needs to be forwarded to the street department for sure. Cause I agree, that's a, that's a hazardous corner, and I don't even live down there, and I know it, so, um. It occurs to me, though, that we establish ordinances as, for, you know, at, at. Based on what the needs of the time are and to serve as a guide for the community, but there's no one ordinance that fits every single scenario, and that's the reason this planning commission exists. Is to look at individual scenarios and see what might exist and approve variances on a case-by-case basis. And whether or not that sets a precedent is kind of up to us to decide whether or not we allow it to set a precedent. Uh, and if we find that a, an ordinance commonly needs a variance, then that is an opportunity for us to recommend to. Uh, the council or other members, that perhaps we should look at those ordinances, the city should look at that and come up with a new recommendation, because it's clearly not meeting the need anymore. So I, I would see the, the commission sitting as a, a leading edge to, to developing, enhancing, and revising those ordinances as need be. Um, and so while I agree, we should absolutely strive to, to meet the ordinance and the intent of the ordinance as often as possible. As often as reasonable, we also need to be open to looking at those individual scenarios and asking, you know, which, which one is better for the community? The, the, overall, and the city overall, what's gonna be the better, the greater impact, and, and I think looking at this. I have a hard time adding impervious surface, I, I, I have a hard time liking to add impervious, impervious surface close to the lake. When there's already so much there. So that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Sean. Um, further comment, Nancy or anyone else?
No, I, I mean, I, I, I see both sides.
Yeah, I do too.
It was more, I just found it, you know, negative, and, and there are exceptions, obviously.
And I'd just bring up, um, um, you know, knowing that. It, it, to me, it looks like it's better than what it used to be, as far as being organized. Um, the other thing that I look at is that. You know, you get more of the parking issues, and of course, the marina itself. Uh, is, is a summertime thing. So it's not a twelve-month. Ongoing problem, you know, month after month. However, the months that it is, uh, a lot of vehicles and stuff there. Is of course when it, it's busiest time of the year for around the lake. Um. I, 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 I don't like the idea of changing our variances. Uh, especially for parking, because we've had issues with that many times. But what I, what I do wanna say is that it is better than what it used to be. And as far as the safety goes, I'm not so sure that. You know, one example, you could close that road that goes out onto, uh. What's the road that goes on the bridge, what's that name?
Long Bridge Road.
Long Bridge Road, and go out on, uh, what's the other road?
Sherwood Drive.
Sherwood Drive, you know, and just have your, your in, inlet and outlet over there. Uh, it's just a thought, but. Um, like I said, my main point is that it's not, you know, it, it's three, three, four months out of the year compared to. All twelve.
Okay.
Okay, Dan, I do have one letter that I forgot to read into the record.
Oh, we need that.
George and Helen Cassett at four hundred South Shore Drive. They are basically opposed to allowing fourteen additional slips, they feel that adding more boat slips would be far too many boats. They also feel that, uh, these can be very noisy on windy days, especially with, if there are any sailboats that have. Rigging that's tied to the mast that kind of clangs against there on a windy day. And they'd also ask the planning commission, council, and the Department of Natural Resources to do an environmental study. To determine what impact this would have on the lake. As far as adding the parking. As far as adding the parking spaces, they have no objections to that request, but it's the additional slips. So this is a letter really more for the DNR than for us.
Yep, but we do need it in the records since it's there, yeah, we don't wanna affect the slips. Further discussion done.
One other thing, each of the cabin doesn't have a dock, do they? No.
I think cabins usually they each up on the shore, but I'm not positive that anyone.
There is one.
There's one, but that's.
The docks are part of the ordinance or something.
So let's, let's ask Liz a formal question here and to make sure, is, are the, are there any docks for the cabins, sir Liz?
Yes, there are docks for the cabins that are there.
Okay, and so does each cabin have a dock?
Not each cabin, there's one long one.
Okay.
That they uniquely share and have. Uh, help me, what's, boat lifts.
Okay.
That are supported along the, and you can see it if you call it up.
That's, that's the one that's attached to the shore right there.
It's got the one lift on it.
Yep.
And that's for all of the cabins then?
And actually, there will be multiple lifts in the summer months that they put in. And that's where the cabins actually share this one dock.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I see three on this photo as an example, so.
And again, we're asking a technical question, so Liz is allowed to participate at this point. Marcus?
I just wanna make a comment because I will be, um, moving away from the community in the future. But my, uh, father and stepmother still live here and just to, to Nancy's point. I do believe that the marinas do provide, um, equal, a lot of equity, a lot of equality for, for people in the community who can't afford to, to have lake property. My dad moved here because, and sold his cabin in South Dakota on a lake because of the opportunity to, to have a boat slip in a marina. Cause he's too old to put it in and out and have the ability just to go walk out. Provides him an opportunity that a lot of communities don't have. And as our community continues to age and have more people with limitations or disabilities. I like the, the opportunity that marinas offer the community because the lakes are for everybody, not just those who live on the lake. So I, I do understand some of the problems that they bring in and, and this location of this marina is, is a little problematic, but it's there. Um, so what do we do about it? I just wanted to make that comment because I know my, I'm staying with my dad next week and if I didn't support it, he probably would kick me out, so.
Okay, all right, so thank you, further comment?
I, I, just to clarify Larry, so, and, and, um, Sam. So, um, it's not determined yet that the DNR will allow the fifty slots. It's possible that they will go back to forty, or the thirty-six, right?
Yeah.
Correct. And so at that, I mean, so at that point.
You're being asked a question.
I mean, so I'm, I'm thinking about the sequence, the sequence of determining, you know, I mean, so, um.
Yeah, so the.
Obviously, we, we're gonna decide on this, we were gonna do some voting tonight, but, or does it make more sense to wait until they've made the determination to know how many slips are gonna have?
Yeah, you'd think that'd be the other way around.
It, yeah, it, it's, um, it's sort of a chicken and egg thing, I think a little bit. And, and Larry said it pretty well, is that they're, they're actually two separate issues.
Right.
Um, so the, the DNR can approve or deny this kind of regardless of what the city does. One of their considerations is the proposed use, and I've done, you know, harm-, you know, is harmonious with local zoning controls or something like that. And so that's kind of how the, this issue meshes with what the city's doing. My understanding of the process is if the marina was as such where there was no variance needed, then I don't think the city would be involved in all, other than getting to be part of the public comment for the DNR's application process. Is that right, Larry?
That's correct.
And so that part has happened, so the DNR has issued their, or issued the proposed permit and received public comment. This is kind of one more box to check in the process and then they have the ultimate decision to say yes or no or modify or something like that. But I don't, it can't, the city approval can't happen afterwards because they need to know what the city is gonna do with it before they make their final decision.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, that clarifies it better for me, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, Sam is right, that the DNR is saying, if you meet all of the local regulations, they probably would approve it. I don't know that for sure until they do it, but it's very likely that they might. We are in the position where we can either grant a variance or else Long Bridge would have to come back and build the four additional spaces and get a mitigation permit from the city, which would allow them to go beyond the thirty-six percent that they're at right now. That could all be done without input from the planning commission or any approval from the city council. That could be done administratively, so they have a way that they could do it, I think, but it, the question is, do we want more impervious surface there or not? So that's what we're trying to decide.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? So I just have a couple of comments before we wrap this up then, so, um, always seems to me that, well, I'm, I'm in favor of this, uh, because we're trying to, I mean, it gets very confusing when you have a previous owner that does something, um, that they shouldn't have done, but then an ordinance changes since the, uh, since the facility was built and we're just trying to bring the current, current, um, use of the facility up to the current ordinance. I don't want you to explain it now, I would've thought we could've grandfathered this in somehow, but Larry, we'll talk later, I wanna understand it, but I, we've taken long enough on this, okay? But basically, okay, I know you wanna answer, but.
It's a simple answer.
Oh, a simple answer is.
You can't grandfather in an illegal use.
Okay, all right, but in my mind, that's what's going on here, is this has been used for this purpose. It was approved by the city back in two thousand and we're just trying to get things into compliance now. So it's, the variance makes sense to me. The other thing though, I would like to have you send another note to the, um, Public Works Committee. Um, and see if they would consider putting a signed crosswalk in over there on that, um, for that parking lot. I think that would make a lot of sense, cause you're right, there's, and if nothing else, maybe it'll slow people down for all the kids that aren't jumping off the bridge.
Well, when you have a crosswalk, you have signage preceding that.
Yep.
So you have a bit of a warning as well.
Especially right on that curve.
Yep.
It's two curves, I mean, it's a mess.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah.
If we can just get people to slow down there, I, I, anyway, if you would. Yep, so if you could carry that.
I don't think we need to stop light, but some weekends you do.
Between, uh.
Roundabout.
But between a painted crosswalk and signage, maybe we could get people to at least pay attention to the fact that there's a lot of pedestrians in that area, so. Okay, see if you could, unfortunately, I can't carry that to Public Works because then we violate open meeting laws, but if you could do that, Larry, I appreciate that, okay? So anyway, that's my, um, view on this, so, um, with that, I'm gonna go, any, well, I guess any further discussion on it first, but. Okay, let's have a vote then, all in favor of the motion to approve the variance, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Or in one abstention, yep, we're Ricky, uh, okay, thank you very much. Okay, thanks you guys, let's move on to, um. Let's move on to item C, Larry, if you could take and fill us in on what's going on with this one.
Yes, item C is a non-conforming lot on North Shore Drive. And they are requesting several variances in order to do some additions to their property, to their home. This is the lot we're talking about, it's way out here on a point. With a very unique access, I'm not sure where the front yard would be on this lot or how you would define that or if that whole tip that goes around the end is all front yard or.
It's a sandbar.
But it, either way that you define it, uh, by the time you meet all the setbacks from the lake, you have a very limited area where you could build anything without getting a variance. So the variances that they have requested are, I think, quite reasonable. Here's the proposed site plan, so you see the existing house, it's setback, you know, as far as it can be from the lake. And, um, so there, the new areas that they're proposing also fit in very nicely with trying to keep as far away from the lake as they can. And, um, an issue was raised about the location of a shed right here and whether or not that's meeting the required setbacks or if it's possibly on somebody else's property, is that correct?
I'm Kelly Wegshide, architect from Perm here on behalf of the owners. Um, the survey provided shows the shed is currently on the owner's property.
And how far is it setback from the property line?
I don't have that in front of me, I believe it's around two feet.
Is that an actual survey done by a surveyor?
We have taken the survey from the surveyor and put this, um, new addition on there. So the location of the home and shed on the property are exactly in, um, conjunction with the survey provided.
Is it possible for us to get a copy of the actual survey?
Uh, yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you. It doesn't say, but it's very close, it's close, but it does show that it is actually on the property. This is a survey done by Meadowland Surveying back in December of two thousand twenty-one.
But the shed exists, right Larry?
The shed exists, and it's on there.
But there's, but it doesn't say how much.
I, I didn't see it, I didn't take a long enough look at it, but I don't believe it was on there, it's.
Further information Larry?
Well, um, I think I'll go through my conditions if I have any.
If you wanna take a seat for just a minute and then, I mean, you can stand there if you want, but. Hate to make you do that, so, okay, here you go, Sean.
So basically, they're asking for a seventy-one foot setback from the ordinary high watermark for a garage addition, a fifty-eight foot setback for a front entry roof and a fifty foot setback for a balcony. We should consider the following findings relative to this request. First, the variance is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance as it will allow the requested improvements and additions without adding additional impervious surface. Two, the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan as it is a residential use in a residential district. Three, the proposal will put the use, put the property to use in a reasonable manner as the proposed setbacks are similar to the existing setbacks on the property. Four, the circumstances are unique to the property as the property is a non-standard shape and is on a peninsula which restricts the buildable area to the, to a very limited space due to setback requirements. And five, the variance will maintain the essential character of the neighborhood as the proposed remodel will be similar to other homes in the area. So I'm recommending approval of the requested variance as stated in the application, subject to the project being constructed as shown on the approved plan.
Okay, questions for Larry? Okay, now if you would come up and fill us in, thank you for waiting.
No problem. The problem with this property Larry already mentioned is that it's an odd shape. In the past, this home has really been kind of an eyesore on the lake. And I personally think that a big portion of that is that this garage is really not a garage. It's inadequate to fit cars in it. So I believe that, uh, people maybe shied away from purchasing this home or upgrading this home to a year-round place. In the past, it was because there was really no reasonable garage. What we're proposing adds on additional space to the garage without increasing impervious surface. We've tried to do it as best we can with the limitations on the lot and really try and, um, keep that addition as far away from the lake as we possibly can.
Okay.
I did get a comment from the Pelican River Watershed District and they noted that this action will trigger a need for a new stormwater management plan from the Pelican River Watershed District. So I think we should, if we decide to approve this, include that as a condition.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
About why that would pertain and just help me understand if we're not increasing any current impervious surface?
The Watershed District has a requirement where they can require, uh, if anything is over twenty-five percent, they can require their proof. So that would be why.
Okay. Um, anything that you wanna add again, otherwise, other, are there other commenter, come on ahead then, if you would. State your name and address.
Hey, my name is Chris Burgen, I live at six oh nine North Shore Drive, I'm right next to the Goodriches. Uh, they're phenomenal neighbors, this is their first winter in Minnesota, they're from Tennessee and, and actually, I'm kinda surprised they're still here after the last winter, so.
Me too, I'm surprised I'm here.
So, I'm not really speaking to the, uh, the setbacks, uh, with the lake, I have some side yard questions. So Larry, what is a side yard setback now? For like a residential.
Setback, the required setback or the existing?
Uh, the required.
Required setback is ten feet.
Okay, so the Goodriches, um, do they need a variance for the side yard setback?
Since the shed is existing, no, they would not.
But clearly the shed's on my property. As they've mentioned.
No, they've said that it's not and the survey shows that it's not.
Okay, um, have you guys been out to view the property? Did you stop and look?
No.
Okay. I guess I'll jump right to the, uh, the, the drawing that, that I have, I think it's the same one that you have. But the drawing is incorrect, the shed is in, uh, the, the picture that you have on the screen is not the way the shed lays out. It's not connected to the house, there's about a three or four foot walkway and the shed is actually advanced. Further would be, I guess, east than the drawing shows. And clearly the, the markers that were put, uh, in from the surveying, um, when I look at that, I, I clearly think that the shed is, is over the lot line. That drawing is not correct. Larry, um, in around two thousand five, can you tell me about the?
The surveyor puts his license on the line to make sure that he's accurate.
Yeah, well, he missed, he missed this one.
This drawing, the one that, the drawing here shows the shed touching the house, but the actual survey shows that the shed is not touching the house.
Okay. The one I have, I guess it shows.
It shows that it goes to the line.
Kind of approach? Sure.
Larry, actually, the original design by the architect, um, shows the shed not touching the house, shows the walkway that Chris defined just now, okay? And then the second one that you have up is the addition to, that Kelly is trying to represent. So this does show what Chris is show, stating here, that there is walkway, it's further east, et cetera, okay? But then the second drawing actually shows the attachment in the new construction that's going to be here.
I see you.
Misleading, that part is.
Yep.
But the first one represents it more so is what Chris just described.
Yep.
Larry, I got another question.
Sure.
In around two thousand five, were there any permits issued to the previous owners for this property?
I have not researched that.
Okay. I believe that's about when the time the shed showed up.
Two thousand five.
I think so, I wasn't the owner then, but I, I think that's in the, in the, in the ballpark. I don't believe the shed is a permanent, I, I think it's just a, something on wood bunks, that there's no foundation. Okay, was the shed part of the design of the house?
It was not, it was just still there, so we kinda designed the addition around if we wanted to use the garage, so.
So the shed would go if the project moved forward?
What size is this shed?
Do you know how big the shed is?
Ninety-six.
It's not a she shed.
Ninety-six square feet. Ninety-six square B.
Well, kind of in a, I mean, the information we have from a licensed surveyor shows it on the. You know, on the, um, Goodriches property, so that's what I think we have to go with, even though you have a disagreement with that. Um. I'm not, so. So I don't think, I don't think it's within the purview of the planning commission, correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, to, you know, resolve boundary disputes.
No.
On things like this, but to certainly, um, certainly, you know, decide setbacks and so forth. But Larry, did you wanna add something to my comment?
I think that you're right. It's not our position to resolve these disputes and we would have to go by a certified survey. We can't. Question that necessarily. I guess what we can do though is since they are adding a significant addition to their garage, we could request that they remove the shed as a. As a condition of getting the variance that they want because it is. It, it creates a building that doesn't meet the side yard setback if it's attached to the existing building.
I que, I have a question though. E- even if it is on the Goodriches property, isn't there supposed to be a ten foot setback and if it's not? It'd sound like it may be a two foot.
Sheds in a rear yard, they can be as close as three feet, but with lake lots like this, the required setback would be ten feet. So how they end up with a shed that was that close, I have no way of knowing at this point.
I mean, it's definitely not ten feet setback.
Certainly not. So that would be justification for requiring its removal.
Now, with the twenty-eight percent. Impervious surface, could that shed be moved? To a different location?
Certainly, they could, they could remove it to a different location on the property.
They could.
They could. But it would probably require another variance of some sort.
Oh, you think so?
I, yes, in looking at this and trying to find places for anything, I believe that would be the case.
If the shed was removed, would that, do you know how much that would change the impervious surface to get to twenty-five percent and then they might not need the watershed?
Uh, I don't, that wouldn't.
It's not enough to do that?
No.
Okay.
I had the same question.
Cause then you wouldn't have to get the watershed involved, yeah.
So again, question for you guys. You're not attached to the shed. I mean, you'd like to have it, but.
It, it's storage. It, 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 it's a nice orb. I mean, it, it's not, it's not nice.
Yeah.
So it, it's there because when we bought the house, it was there.
He didn't have a lot of storage, but adding a garage will add storage, so.
Just, I got caught in the same situation. Had a shed that actually was on the neighbor's property. He let it sit there for like sixteen years and then I finally tore it down and put up a bigger garage, so, anyway.
It's not a, don't work in that.
Yeah, it would help us all a lot if we could just make that a condition, so.
Thank you for doing the math.
Yep, I thi, I believe so.
And if you could make that a condition, I have actually no issues. And I didn't, yeah, I just. Well, the, I didn't see the, uh, the official drawing. This is what I received, which was the, uh, incorrect drawing of the architect. Yep.
Didn't see the correct one for the proposed. You just didn't see the existing.
Yep, right, so.
Looks like it's attached.
That's a good way to put, yes, exactly correct. Proposed is, proposed has a touching, existing does not, so, yeah, as you can see it. Alright, thank you. Um, alright, so further questions from the planning commission? Okay, if not, uh. Um, we'll, um, close the hearing part of it and look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
With the con, as it is, or do you wanna add to take out the shed?
No, take out the shed.
Okay.
Second.
Second on that. Further discussion? So there's a condition that we're putting on to take out the, the shed, so. Okay, um, Liz?
Just one comment. Larry had also proposed that they, um, obtain a Pelican Water Shed District permit.
Yeah.
Yes, which is required, so can we add that to the motion in the second, very good, sorry. Thank you, Liz, for being on top of that.
Thank you, Liz.
Yep, okay, fur, go ahead. Question, okay. Right, um, further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, so you get everything you want, but you're gonna lose that crappy little shed, okay?
Does it store a snowblower? That's all I wanna know.
Yeah.
If you take away their snowblower, then Chris should have to snow blow their driveway.
Yeah.
I don't think Chris heard that.
If they're storing their snowblower in there and we take it away, they won't have a place for it. You'll have to snow. Anyway, alright, um.
Off the record, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I just, you guys may think that's an ugly building. That building has, that home has a lot of history in that neighborhood. And I used to live on North Shore Drive and at some point I'm gonna come tell you about it. It used to be where the North Shore Croquet Club played their matches.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Cool.
Well, Barney Allen owned it. It was the, it was the Allen farm that was most of all that property.
So, well, I hope you guys decide to stay here for a long time, so. Good, thank you. Alright, good. And of course, as I said, this will move forward to the city council on Tuesday, so if you wanna show up, you can.
So what are we having this, the conversation about, uh?
Thank you.
Wakeboats on the short lakes.
About, about what?
About wakeboats.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. We don't have jurisdiction on the water, so is the problem. That's gotta go to the sheriff.
Just on the, just on the beach, three hundred feet out.
On the beach, yeah.
How far out?
You got a study going on, it's.
DNR, and there is a study going on on that.
They have something in the paper not long ago.
Yeah.
Controversial.
Yeah, it is.
Anything else that needs to come up?
My wakeboarding days are over.
Yeah. Anything else that needs to come up tonight?
Larry, any comments on the, uh, conditional use of their variance report that you wanna bring forward at all?
No.
You just wanna go home and go to bed right now.
No, there just isn't anything.
Yeah, no, yeah, alright, thanks.
I do see the Broadway welding is extended and extended.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's that?
Seems to be an ongoing thing.
There's a number of them on there that seem like they're done, though. The model property, isn't that?
He's the chair of the community development committee, so.
Yeah.
It's the Dan Joseph.
It looks like that building was done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to?
I'll just adjourn. I don't think we need a motion.